March 23, 2022, City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Chilton?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Hutchings?
Present.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Nelson?
Present.
Carey?
Present.
Student Representative Knowles?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Ms. Hutchings? May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Would the Clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes, March 9, 2022, council meeting minutes. New business ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2022-007, amending Saldana Municipal Code 2.04.050, compensation for city council, and 2.05.030, compensation of the mayor to adjust monthly salary amounts introduced by the mayor, set for public hearing on April 13, 2022. Ordinance 2022-008, amending Saldana Municipal Code 2.50.030, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to increase membership and meeting frequency, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on April 13, 2022. Ordinance 2022-009, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $1,000, excuse me, $128,000 in the Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of two replacement police patrol vehicles, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on April 13, 2022. Ordinance 2022-010, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $1,750 in the General Fund for a donation received from the Saldana Library Friends, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on April 13, 2022. Ordinance 2022-011, accepting grant funds from the State of Alaska, Department of Education and Early Development, and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $1,250 in the General Fund to attend the Public Library Association Conference, introduced by the city manager, set for public hearing on April 13, 2022. Resolution 2022-009, repealing Resolution 2021-036, which recommended that masks be worn in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings while the Central Kenai Peninsula was experiencing substantial or high transmission of COVID-19, introduced by Councilmember Ruffridge, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the Clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak on the agenda? Seeing none, I have no hands raised on Zoom, so I have here. Hearing no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is a presentation with prior notice, and I'd like to introduce Katie Cowgill of the Kenai Peninsula Reentry Coalition, who will be making a presentation to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you all. It's kind of weird you're a little bit behind me, so I apologize if I'm just looking forward. So, and thank you, council members, for allowing me the chance to speak about our reentry simulation that's happening on April 2. I am Katie Cowgill. My role with the Kenai Peninsula Reentry Coalition is currently the reentry case manager and program manager. Reentry refers to the release of inmates from jail and prison, and our coalition works with adult men and women that are releasing from sentenced facilities onto the Kenai Peninsula, so they have served all of their sentence. They are releasing onto supervised probation and parole with the Kenai Probation Office, and they are at the highest risk of recidivism. So I believe it's important to note here for council members and for the public that our program and reentry services in general don't affect offenders' sentencing, their length of sentence, their status when they're incarcerated, or their probation and parole status when they are released. Across the peninsula, we have six correctional facilities spanning from transitional and minimum to maximum at Spring Creek and Seward. And of these facilities, we know that 2,200 offenders were released last year, and those were mainly from two facilities. I am going to skip a page, sorry, and clarify a typo on this page because since I sent this out, I've actually found some new information, which is that the level has gone down, but over 95% of inmates at state institutions are released in their lifetime. And according to the U.S. Department of Justice, between 650 and 700,000 people are released each year across our nation. Alaska sees nearly 10,000 releases a year. And recidivism in Alaska is the highest in the nation. For every three offenders released from incarceration, two of them will recidivate. And recidivism is defined as returning to incarceration within the first three years of release. If you can skip to page 12, can I, just for time? So, access to services. These are some of the services that we offer our participants every day and will be highlighted by providers and agency representatives during our reentry simulation. One of the biggest issues in our area, which many of you probably know, is treatment. Most, all of our cases right now are people who have substance use disorders, and then housing and employment are really coming in, coming in second there. So, reentry simulations have taken place across the state with huge success. We have tailored our simulation to showcase the strengths and barriers you need to reentry on the peninsula. So even if you've attended one in the past, this is going to be quite different. Think of it as a large-scale role-play activity. Participants take on a persona of a reentrant. They're given a specific criminal history and a background, certain resources, and tasked with complying with probation and parole while completing certain tasks and accessing resources during simulated weeks. At the end of each week, probationers that have not successfully completed tasks may be sent to jail or assigned stricter conditions of release. And this is just to show, to highlight what that really looks like for reentry in the real world, that a slip-up might not necessarily mean you go just go back to square one, but it might mean that you need to check in with your probation officer more often or you have to pay more in a fine. Reentrants may bail out if they're arrested or serve their sentence during the following week. It's important to note that, or to, for us to invite policymakers like yourselves and change makers that, sorry, it's important that we give you a chance to attend this event because the change ultimately begins here. And in order to address stigma and social change, we really see it at our local policy in the beginning. So, the barriers to employment and housing and other basic needs that we see in our reentrance that we serve are highlighted during the simulation, and this allows participants a chance to have a deeper understanding of the issues that we face every day. So we don't all have lived experience, and that's a great thing. But a personal connection to incarceration and reentry is helpful for understanding what they're going through and the barriers, as well as, again, breaking down the stigma that's associated with incarceration and reentry. So this simulation is a unique chance for people to kind of gain a closer, more emotional connection to it without having to walk it themselves or know someone intimately that has been incarcerated or released from incarceration. So I want you to picture for a moment that time, a time when you were really at your lowest and at your very worst, and think about the actions and reactions that you made during that time of like your highest stress and trauma. And then imagine if every single day of your life was defined by that and it followed you around forever. Most of our reentrants face this every day. When they were at their lowest point, when they made a horrible mistake, they paid their time that the society has deemed necessary for them to pay. But they're released and they still find that that follows them around, and it keeps them from accessing services. It keeps them from finding housing. It keeps them from finding employment. These are some of the most driven people I've ever seen in my life who can't get jobs right now. For most of our reentrants and myself, it's a reality, as I said, and a massive barrier to meeting their basic needs. So if they can't find a job, they can't pay their rent. If they can't find a house, they can't go to work. Those two things really, they're the catch-22, really. The choices that they've made in their lowest moments have shadowed their futures forever, and the barrier of a criminal record to employment and to housing actually creates recidivism versus eliminating risk to the community. The only way to change a system is through support of community leaders. And, again, breaking down that stigma. If it's okay to talk about it, if it's okay to say, yes, we want to help these people, then it gives our community the, the, sorry, the word is lost, but it empowers our community leaders to then speak up in public, change the community tide, if you will, and then we can ultimately change policies. So I know change is possible because I've lived it. And this moment that you all see on your sheets is one of the worst moments of my life, and I have constantly had to prove to myself and to the public that I'm safe to be around, that I'm safe to house, that I'm safe to employ. And my purpose now is just to help others that are struggling with this because I know it, I've lived it, and I know that it's possible, but it takes an intense amount of work. Reentry services do work. This is Johnny. Through intense case management and meeting basic needs, Johnny has been able to recover and break that cycle. So after 16 years since he was a teenager, and I knew him then, so Johnny is finally off paper, which means that he has successfully completed his probation conditions without being rearrested. 16 years of bouncing in and out of jail or juvenile incarceration. Johnny struggled with substances and trauma from a childhood. And by meeting his basic needs where he was at at that time, we were able to provide him some services, and now he is able to be a contributing member of society. He works, he pays his taxes, he pays his rent. He's, he's successful in the community, and he's been clean. He's now helping others in the same manner by mentoring and helping people succeed. And we couldn't be prouder of him. I just wanted to give a little shout out to his two years clean, so, because we know how much work he put into this. Each year, this is the point that I think matters here for you folks. Every year, a single inmate incarcerated costs over $50,000. That's way more than I make in a year, so I know that this is important. I know that we can do this. We just have to do it as a community. If you can join us on Saturday, April 2, we're going to be at the Old Cars Mall. It's, we're asking people to arrive around 11:00. We're going to serve lunch. It'll be a few hours. It'll be very enlightening and, sorry, just learn what you can do to help change the tide. And we need people like you to be there and pretend to be reentrants so that you can see how it works and understand the actual gaps in services that we have locally here. So thank you again for your time and your consideration, and I hope to see some of you there, all of you, but thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Kelly, or Katie, for coming, coming today. And you did a fabulous job. So, the Reentry Coalition, are there members? Who are your members on the Reentry Coalition?
So, okay, it's kind of a, we have a coalition, and then we have a board, and then we have some staff. So in terms of coalition, we've got just about everybody that's a social service agency, substance use treatment providers. Do you want to know specifics or just, okay? Housing, Housing Authority, Department of Corrections. We work really closely with Department of Corrections, and we have had some law enforcement come and go throughout, throughout the time. I know it's, it's a weird time for, for everyone. We, yeah, just a lot of social service agencies and employers across the board.
If I might follow up. So, if I'm getting released, I've been in jail for a while and I'm getting released. Before I'm released, am I provided the information about the Reentry Coalition as a potential source of someone I might be able to go to if I need assistance? Is that how I'd find out about you as a former inmate?
It is. Thank you for your question. It's, we used to be able to do in, what's called in-reach, which is going to the jails and providing like a class and identifying people and enrolling them there. Since COVID, the facilities have been shut down, so I know that we have a video that's similar to the PowerPoint, but it's an actual video, just me talking and some of, some of these. But it showed on their CCTV, and we do have some marketing materials in there. I do get calls from the jail. So I, I would love to hear from people earlier than, right before their release. That would be the ideal, would be about three months before their release so that we can actually get things in place for them. But we do, we do definitely work with people before they're released.
So, for, you put some numbers in the presentation on, on people being released. What's about the percentage, remind me, of parole lease that contact you, your organization?
Oh, that's a great question. So our eligibility standards are, our guidelines are pretty stringent. So we take, we take the people who are at the highest risk that are on felony probation and parole. So of those individuals that qualify, we probably see 20% of them referred right now. I definitely have people calling me that are from all sorts of, of different criminal histories, but those that we do case management with are, are those felons that are at the highest risk of recidivism.
Again, thank you for the, for the presentation, and I will try to make it on April 2.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate that. How many case managers are with the Coalition currently?
Just me.
Just you? Okay. Plans on adding more?
I think, there is a plan to, so I took over on an interim basis so that we could really help people. There is definitely a plan to hire a case manager. Yes, full-time, just, just a case manager because I have a lot of other duties, so. But as it is right now, having more than one would be more like a five-year plan than a right-now plan.
Where does the funding for this come?
A few different sources. We have, the bulk of our funding comes from the Department of Health and Social Services, DBH, and it's through the Recidivism Reduction Program. We also have some private funds and a little bit of local funding.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I want to acknowledge Katie in that she mentioned that those people that she works with are very eager and working very hard to, to restart things. Katie was the president of our reentry board, and basically when the case manager quit and there was vacancy, she stepped down from the board to take on the position. And in doing that, it made it much more difficult for the job she had at that time. And I just want to say that she is the type of individual that in order, she is so strongly committed to this program that she has put herself at risk in terms of employment in order to take on this responsibility and keep helping these people. And again, I just think she's an excellent example of the individuals that the Reentry Coalition is working to, to assist. And that's the major thing I want to say. We're not there to help them because help means that we're doing it, they can't do it on their own. Assist means that we're going to be partnered with them. We're gonna, we're gonna be, again, side by side with them. And she is an excellent example. I've enjoyed for the last two and a half years being a part of the board, and I'm the secretary of the board, and Katie ran the board. And she's been very involved in keeping it going. And in my opinion, without her, the Kenai Peninsula Reentry Coalition would have fallen apart. There are hundreds that are part of the larger group. Again, every judge, every lawyer, every, every, but there's this very small group of people who have been willing to truly turn their life over to making this work, and she's one of those. And I just, I thank you greatly for what you do.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? I do have one question. How many of the people you deal with are veterans?
So, of the cases I've had so far, zero. I know they're out there. We just haven't connected with them yet. I think that unfortunately vets have major needs, and I think they haven't gotten to the place that they are seeking case management services yet through reentry. But I, I would love to connect with veterans. I just, we haven't, we haven't caught any yet, so.
And just a comment. I've worked all three sides. I've been a correctional officer, I've been a police officer, and then I worked for the Public Defender Agency. So I've kind of seen all three sides of the whole system. And you're doing a good job, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Will be item six, excuse me, item five, public comments and presentations. These are for items not appearing on the agenda. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber who would like to speak on any item that is not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? And for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. I see no one here in these chambers, and I see no hands raised. So we'll move on to item seven on the agenda, public hearings. Testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. Ordinance 2022-006, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $3,064.29 in the COVID-19 Relief Special Revenue Fund for additional grant funds received from the State of Alaska Department of Commerce and Community and Economic Development as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, of 2021, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of ordinance 2022-006, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $3,064.29.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This ordinance has an accompanying memo from Finance Director Melanie Imholtz. And essentially, this is funds that was either declined or in one case, a non-responsive municipality did not receive the original allocation of ARPA funds, and it was based on a formula basis, strictly a formula basis. And so the state had recently contacted the city of Saldana and let us know that they were redistributing those funds among the remaining 141 municipalities according to that same formula. So that resulted in a potential increase of our ARPA funding of $3,064.29, and the ordinance would appropriate that with the previously appropriated ARPA funds, which, of which the city has not yet utilized any of those funds. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, a public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participant, participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber who would like to speak on ordinance 2022-006? Seeing none, I'll look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Hearing no one wishing to speak on this item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll. Call vote.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-006 passes on a 6-0 vote. Moving on to the next agenda item, and that will be Resolution 2022-010, providing up to $25,000 from the COVID Relief Special Revenue Fund to the Alaska Children's Institute for the Performing Arts for the purpose of producing an outdoor community theater production at Saldana Creek Park in the summer of 2022, introduced by Councilmember Ruffridge. May I have a motion to adopt?
You may. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-010, please.
And a second for Mr. Carey. Thank you. Report from Councilmember Ruffridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Mr. Rizzo for being in attendance today. And he's here to answer any questions or provide other comments if needed. Last summer, I'm not sure if any of you were able to attend, but I was able to attend and bring my family our first large-scale musical production in Saldana Creek Park. It was a huge hit, attended by thousands of people, families gathering on sunny days and one not-so-sunny day. And I think the not-so-sunny day was the day that the cast wished that it wasn't The Little Mermaid being produced, but so, so let it be done. And it, it was an immense privilege and joy to attend that performance. It brought many people from our community together. We saw children performing for our, our, our community. We saw families in attendance. We saw an entire live orchestra, just things that we haven't seen in the park before. And one of the highlights of that event was that it was offered for free. So something that could bring some, some people together, provide an outlet for children to perform in our community in the dramatic arts, bring a production to life, use our beautiful park for this event. Unfortunately, to provide such an event costs some dollars. Last year, we had some CARES funds that were available and were surprised by the outpouring of support for that event. So at the request of Mr. Rizzo and myself, we are requesting the potential to grant funds up to $25,000 for the, for the purpose of producing a outdoor community production. The goal of that is to make a sustainable operation through the fact that we will ask for remuneration in the amount of a pay-what-you-can model. So this is still free for those that want to come and see the show. However, donations are accepted, and this will help keep our costs down. The goal of this is to really test the waters to see if this is something that can be done. The goal of this is to really test the waters to see if this is something that can be done in the future because it would be just an incredible opportunity for our community and for our children, our community, to perform. My request is to use a small amount from the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the city of Saldana accepted and appropriated. And that would give the Triumvirate Theater an opportunity to produce that. And then we could see how much was received back from the community in donations for the service. And then we could move forward from there. And appreciate your support and happy to answer any questions after public testimony. And I'm sure Mr. Rizzo has more to add. So thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this? Please state your name for the address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Joe Rizzo, address 55761 Mantasta Avenue, Kenai, Alaska. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for providing those funds last year. As Councilmember Ruffridge said, it was a unarguably great success. It involved lots and lots of kids. It involved lots of, lots of adults in the community. But I, I do want to mention that, you know, there's two things that the arts do for a community. And the first one is, which everybody knows, is it increases the quality of life. It makes your town a special place to be by making special events. But the other thing that a lot of people overlook is that the arts is also a huge economic driver. Of the, you know, $55,000 that we were given in this COVID grant to do this production of Little Mermaid, I would say a large percentage of that money went back into the community. It went to people that shop at the grocery stores. I myself purchased, I don't know how much plywood and, and various things here in the, in the community. And it is also one of those things where the arts helps us pitch things and, and grow as a community. Recently, Stephanie Queen asked me if I would write a letter of recommenda, or a letter of support, rather, for the ADA funds that we're trying to get for, to, for the redevelopment of the whole, that whole park area between the Kenai River and the Spur Highway. And absolutely, I will. And, you know, when I can say to those folks, look, the community of Saldana has been a huge supporter of the arts. Since I was a kid in high school here, the paint was even dry at Saldana High School. Like, we have always supported the arts in this town. And to be able to, like, pitch that and say, here's another reason why the city of Saldana is serious about developing this into a community that is not just a place to live, but a place to live. And this is, uh, this is a great opportunity, as was mentioned, for us to see how much this will cost. We've already, you know, obviously cut this budget down immensely. Triumvirate for our part, we really, we just don't want to lose any money on it. We don't want to make any money on it, but we don't want to lose any money on it. Especially right now, we can't really afford to take that, that chance. So we're asking the city to partner with us and make that possible so that we can try it out again. And like, let's see, let's see how much, how many donations that we get back. Anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
So what date do you have scheduled for this production?
Well, as you probably know, the Saldana Creek Park is becoming incredibly popular. I, I actually had just talked with Joel a little while ago, and he said that there's a Friday available, he thought, at the end of July. We've probably tried to do it in that same timeframe that we were in before. We, I'm quite honestly, and if you got to see that video of it, you could see we lucked out with the weather, so.
And what is the production going to be?
Well, I think the production would probably be the same thing that it was last, last year, which was, you know, we have worked with Tim Elder to make sure that So High Auditorium was available so that if it was just a complete rain out, you know, we could go somewhere.
True, but I mean, what is the production going to be?
Oh, what, I'm sorry, what is the production? I, I believe right now that the director is considering Tarzan, Disney's Tarzan, something for the children.
Any other questions from the council? And Mr. Chilton?
Thank you again for being here and presenting. It was great to see that offer in our city last year. So I appreciate all the work that you and the community did to make that happen. I, I guess I would just ask for a little bit more clarity on what exactly this $67,000 that is estimated for the cost of this production, how, how that really breaks down. I mean, I'm, I'm not really familiar with theater. It just seems like a really high number to me. And I was just curious if you could help us ground that number.
Well, part of the, this is generally the public in, in general doesn't realize how much a major musical production costs. I think they think that it's, you can just kind of throw it together, but nothing is free. And in the summer, it's even more expensive because I can't get volunteers to, to do it. Like, I can't, I can't get Kent Peterson to, you know, direct an orchestra all summer. Use his whole summer up, like, doing that without some kind of compensation. The other thing is that drives the cost of this is actually having a full-time person that runs it. I mean, they do rehearsals every day. They, you know, put together the sponsorships. They put together all of the, the set, you know, coordinate all those things, coordinate with the orchestra director. And so a lot of those costs, if you look at the budget on that, you know, that's approximately, you know, about $20,000 of that, of the, of the actual $35,000 in cash goes to, like, just staff, like, making it happen.
Got it. And then is this for, is this just one night that this produces, or do you do it on multiple showings?
We do mul, we did multiple showings last year, and we would probably want to do that again.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
So I heard you say you, right now you have a Friday, but you hope to do maybe a three-day production like you did last year, but you don't know at this point?
Well, what we did last year is we did two Saturdays. We did the last Saturday of July and the first Saturday of August. So really, that's going to be about the availability of the park. We could, I mean, if we know we have the funding going forward, we, you know, we can set dates very, very soon and can get things going.
Another question. So you, the resolution is providing up to 25,000, not 25,000. So is it providing 25,000? And then I see on the in-kind rehearsal space provided by the city and the school district, and then rental of the sports center and park as in-kind. So is that included in the 25, or is that in addition to the 25?
Well, the, if you include the in-kind donations, the budget for this whole thing is about, is $67,330. And that includes in-kind donated by the city and also by Triumvirate.
So should the council pass this, the city's contribution would be almost, probably about 45% of the overall budget?
Probably, as far as with in-kind donations.
In-kind and cash, yeah. And the cash is strictly at this point from, I use the term CARES Act monies because there's so many different pots, but it's strictly to come from those, those CARES Act funds?
It's my understanding that, and Councilman can answer that question, I suppose, but.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Correct. I think this is a good opportunity. We have ARPA funds available. This falls straight in line with our city plan, our master plan for 2030, that we will be supportive of the arts and culture events. So I think my, my goal here is to have a sustainability model. And some of this is, I think there's a little uncertainty as to what people will donate to see a show in the park outside. Some people could donate a little. Some people can donate nothing. Some people could donate a lot. Depending on the amount of attendance, there would be a potential to recoup a good amount of the initial grant funds from, from the city. And that's essentially the goal here, is to determine whether or not there is a, a desire from our community to see more like this, and are they willing to provide dollars in order to do it? And so rather than the risk of that be to a theater who's attempting to rebuild from a tragedy, this is a good opportunity for the city to meet them halfway or 45% of the way and see what, see what happens. We have an opportunity to do that from dollars that really was designed to help us rebuild and, and grow out of COVID, and I think it's a good opportunity to do so. But I think that was your question.
I, I do want to mention that, you know, as far as Triumvirate's part of this, you know, normally, if we put on a musical production, for example, we do one up in Wasilla every year and have for many, many years. You know, in general, we'll spend, you know, $40,000, $50,000 doing a production like that. And usually, you know, in a good year, you know, we'll make a profit of, you know, 30, sometimes $40,000 on a production. I mean, we'll sell $90,000 worth of tickets. In this case, because we want it to be free to the public, because we want it to be available, you know, for Triumvirate, you know, we're not really trying to make any money on it. We're really just trying to break even on it. And, and because of, you know, because of that, you know, we're pretty confident that if we can receive up to $25,000 from the city, that mitigates our risk in putting on a program like this. Because there's a lot of other funding out there that, you know, given if the city supports this, that we can go to the Alaska State Council on the Arts, we can go to the Alaska Community Fund. There's a lot of different entities we can go to and say, you know, we're partnering with the city of Saldana. Anytime you're partnering with a municipality, that, like, immediately helps you get further grant funds. Success begot success is what's been, has been my experience with it. So I, I think that there's a lot of other potential funds out there. And, you know, to Councilman Ruffridge's point of sustainability, I think that's what we're really attempting to do here is, like, in the, in the real working world, let's see if we can make this something that is sustainable and doesn't really, you know, cost the city very much money to, like, put on.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I strongly support this. And in my way of looking at it, and all the things you said, both of you are very positive. But this provides something for the community to not have to pay for when they come in. And so again, we talk about the kids, we can talk about the elderly, we can talk about everyone. So from my standpoint, what this is, the city of Saldana is, is purchasing the tickets so that I can show up. And I'm real pleased and grateful for what you're doing, and I hope the council will prove this.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I don't have a background in theater, so it's hard for me to wrap my mind around the costs that are structured with this. And coming into it, that just seemed like such a high number. But the more and more I think about this, I, I think you can, you can really, to put this in perspective, you can look at it as kind of a venture, as venture capital, essentially, to get an operation off the ground. I mean, we, we started out with our Music in the Park series, and that required some initial capital outlay to get that going. And they've got to a point where it's just a, a community staple every year. And it's amazing to see what that's grown into in the park. And they do not require any additional funding each year from our council. They've got to the point where through community sponsors and, and vendors that they have there on site, it's, it's self-sufficient. And I, I don't know what your thoughts are on this, but I could see this potentially growing to be kind of a, something that runs in tandem with that in the summer and is just kind of a staple of our summer series and is self-sufficient. So I, I'm comfortable with this, and we'll be supporting it at least for one more year to see where this goes.
You know, the, the initial grant that we got kind of, I mean, we would have never, we would have never attempted this. Outdoor theater, you know, we would, Triumvirate would have never risked, like, tens of thousands of dollars because we couldn't, we couldn't afford to do that. It was only really because of this COVID money that we even got a chance to discover, like, wow, like, people really, like, responded to this. And so I guess this is kind of the second phase to see, okay, they responded to it. Now, are they willing to, you know, support it? And it's really anybody's guess how that's going to, like, turn out.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. You, you brought this up, Joe, and said, you know, if we hadn't had the COVID monies, this wouldn't have been something possible. What about next year? We're not going to have this pass-through money. So are you going to be coming back to this, to the city? And, you know, we've had this discussion at council already because we've been able to distribute monies that we've received from the federal government for free. What do we do come next year when people are like, well, you've supported us in the past, but it was with that pass-through money? So are you going to be coming back?
Right. Well, the way I see it, there's really, really only two options as far as the sustainability of this. Either you have to charge for tickets, which I think would, I don't think that would work. I think that the reason why so many people came is because they could bring their kids, you know, because honestly, a $15 ticket or a $20 ticket is very difficult for families. I mean, if you're towing six kids with you, that can be quite a bit of money. So I think that, you know, really, this will be about seeing what other resources are out there. Because, I mean, there's lots of, there's lots of resources out there that support the arts. So the more, you know, the higher, like, the higher echelon of support you get, like, from a municipality, the more likely I think you are to get a repeat of that kind of funding. And so that's, I mean, honestly, what I'm going to work on. If the council decides that this is something they want to, like, do this year, I'm going to spend the next month, you know, looking for matching funds, basically, and, and seeing what we can do. And then we'll, we'll be able to see how much we can bring in, in donations at the door. You know, the, the idea is that, you know, last time when we did this, it was kind of just kind of a free-for-all, like, everybody come on down to the park. I think what we would do in this incidence is we would, we would, you know, put the fencing up and make everybody come through, like, one entrance point and be able to say, hey, you know, every, every person comes through, you know, if you'd like to see this happen again next year, like, would you be willing to donate, like, something to the, to come to the, you know, the, the event today? And if they don't, well, that's fine. We're going to make it very clear that it's a free event. But I think we give them that opportunity to, to donate to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just on the sustainability, I, I think that's a great question from Councilmember Parker. And that was really, in conversations with Mr. Rizzo, a, a big highlight for me is how do we make this be something, as Councilmember Chilton says, something that becomes a staple in the park? And there's just a lot of question marks because, Mr. Rizzo, it's clear, last year, it was, you know, yeah, it was a fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants operation, can't believe we're putting this together, but here we go, rah rah. This year, we're really hoping to take a different approach with that and really say, this is something we want to have sustainable. I think businesses will sponsor it. There's grants available. I think there, you were mentioning some arts grants. Alaska State Council on the Arts has grant funding, and there's other grant funding. I think, you know, Triumvirate is trying to get its feet back underneath themselves after the theater situation. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for Saldana and the performing arts of all kinds to potentially do more things in the future. kinds to potentially do more things in the future. We don't really have a great space outside of, you know, our Sohigh Theater to do anything that would be a, a production of some sort. I mean, for those of you who have seen Into the Woods, you understand that performing spaces at a premium. I mean, we're performing in a warehouse behind Subway. So it's not ideal. So this is something we need to continue to support and see what we can do as a community to build this. Cause a summertime production is great, but really for me, the performing arts really hits its stride in the wintertime when we're all bored and we want to be entertained by one another. And that's, that's what I hope is to continue that, that model in our community. And we have a long history of that. The performing arts has been huge in this community for a long time. Some of our earliest members of this community were, were very involved in that. And so this is the next iteration. And I think if they could see what, what, what was happening in the park, they would be very proud.
Ms. Hutchings.
Yes. You mentioned that when you go to the valley, that it's a for-profit situation. So how many tickets do you sell and what are the tickets going for?
We usually sell our tickets for a musical, a major musical production up there for $25 apiece. And then we'll usually bring in, you know, 80, $90,000 in ticket sales. The, you know, one of the costs that we save by doing it in the park is that we don't do things that we save on royalties and we save on like rental of an auditorium. You know, the rental, I mean, we just did Sound of Music up in the valley. It was $12,000 just for the rights to do the Sound of Music. Fortunately, what we found is because it's offered free to the city, you know, to the city event, the Music Theater International, it holds the rights to a lot of these Disney shows and all of that, basically charged us a pittance of like 1,500 bucks because it's free, because it's to the public. If we were to charge $25 a ticket, then they would charge us accordingly. We would rack up another, you know, $12,000 probably of royalty cost.
So I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that you can sell a ticket for $25 a person up there, but you can't sell it for anything down here?
Well, I think you could. I think you could in the winter in an auditorium. You know, I mean, as far as doing it, doing a production like this in the park at $25 a ticket, I think that, you know, people like, you know, people in my tax bracket could afford to go and bring their families. So I think there's a lot of people that could not go to it.
And if you reduce the ticket to $10 a person?
I, I don't know. I think that there, I think that there's something about this event. I think the fact that it was free and in the park, I think is what made it work. I think if we were, I think if we're to, I think if we're to charge it, then I think that this is something else, you know, as far as.
So in other words, it's not sustainable unless you have the grants to go with it, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, well, that's pretty much the case with theater in general is, you know, we, we depend a lot on grants to like make it through. I mean, if you had to make it through on just ticket sales, you, you couldn't like operate your own, at least we, we couldn't.
And program advertising wouldn't bring you very much?
Program advertising brings in some, like, I mean, we probably, last year with, you know, businesses like Hutchings that, that advertised in the program, I think we brought in, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was probably like four or $5,000 probably.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here in the chambers, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no one with their hands raised on Zoom. I do have some comments. And I cannot support this resolution for a couple of reasons. The main reason being is the process. I see nothing wrong with the, having the event. It's the process we went through to, to possibly fund it. We have created the mini-grant program where people apply for and those applications are reviewed and decisions are made on whether they're granted that mini-grant. We also have the budget, non-departmental budget system that we review those during the year, the yearly budget. We also have, last year we did CARES grants. Every group, organization and project had the opportunity to file an application and have it reviewed for funding. That was advertised and notified and, and groups had the opportunity, an equal opportunity, an equal opportunity to obtain those funds. That's not happening in this case. Now, last, last meeting, we received a, a request from a group that has been doing a program down here for probably 30 years, asking the council for assistance. No action was taken on that. And that's a group that brings in hundreds of people to attend it, along with different various organizations that present during that. So I can't support this resolution, but if the council made the decision to say, all right, we're going to set aside X amount of money from the ARPA funds, we're going to do the same thing that we did with the CARES Act money and advertise it, tell the groups and organizations that these funds are available. There's an, the administration can put together an application and review them and make recommendations for funding. Then that I can support. That way everyone, every group, every organization and everyone has an equal opportunity to go for those funds instead of us sitting here and next month, somebody else comes in or XYZ productions comes in and says, I want to do this, give us the money. So that's my, my position on this at this point in time. And I'll call for the roll call vote.
I would like to wait and we have, we just closed the public comment period. I'd like to maybe have some council discussion if we could. I had a question for the city manager, if I might. So this round of CARES Act monies that we are receiving, the 1.14, remind me the allocation, I thought we were going to be using that primarily within the city. Can you remind me on that, please?
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. Through the mayor, I'm going to be real careful. This is not CARES Act money. It is ARPA funds, although I, I recognize why we might have used those terms interchangeably. But the CARES Act grant funding, that essentially that 10 million has been entirely closed out. The city doesn't have any remaining CARES Act funding. We've closed out that grant completely. This is ARPA funding, which was a separate piece of legislation and it has been appropriated. The city council adopted an ordinance appropriating those funds. We got that little additional bit of funding earlier tonight, but it comes to the 1.14 million dollar range. Of that, we've received half. So we've received the first tranche and the second tranche comes sometimes, sometime soon. They were distributed a year apart. It's very different than the CARES Act money in terms of eligible uses, particularly because with this legislation, with the ARPA legislation, the, the eligible recipients, meaning the municipalities, are allowed to use these funds on governmental services, which is a very flexible term that essentially means that we as a recipient can use these funds on any typical expenses that we as a city would use it for. If you recall, originally we were crunching numbers according to a lost revenue equation. There was going to be the ability to use these funds broadly if a municipality had met certain revenue requirements. We did meet those requirements. However, subsequent to that, the feds kind of threw that out and said, there's, you know, they made it more flexible. There's this presumption that every community receiving less than a certain dollar amount, I think it's 10 million, can use those funds generally. So in terms of reviewing this proposal to use ARPA funds that Mr. Ruffridge brought forward for this particular use, Melanie Inhold, our finance director, has confirmed it's an eligible use. And that is because ARPA funds are, are able to be used broadly. Those funds have been appropriated by the council, but no specific use has been identified. So originally when we got those ARPA funds, I had some ideas. I have shared some thoughts, but essentially we have not used those funds. And if we were going to use them, I would come to the council like this with an action item so that the council could designate either a program or a specific expenditure. As of today, that has not happened. So they're not necessarily restricted for any particular use. We have just not yet come to the council with a specific ask. This would be the first.
Uh huh. So with the CARES Act monies, we, we kind of had a, you had a very good process, how we determined how we were going to distribute the funds. With these ARPA funds, were you going to look at the same sort of allocation where some funds might be available for different entities and organizations, certain percentages? Or is this something you're still formulating and are we going to end up, where we, if we appropriate this, we're kind of chipping away, but we don't really have a plan as to how we're going to, to spend the ARPA funds?
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker, Vice Mayor Parker. We have not been formulating that plan behind the scenes. My preference would be not to do elaborate grant programs like we did in 2020 and 2021, simply because I don't think we could sustain that with our existing staff. It was a tremendous push. So I, that's why we had not been formulating a, a similar plan, getting the stakeholder groups together, asking about need. I think need is the second reason why that had not seemed like a priority to me in bringing forth something to the council, because I think largely those needs that existed in 2020 and 2021 are no longer at the same scale, or in some cases, the needs don't exist at all anymore. I, I did recall one thing that we had identified as potential ARPA use funding for was the, the grant writing services. So when we come forward with a recommendation on those grant writing services, I had in my memo identified that this could be a potential use of funds for that. But as I'm, I've stated earlier, these funds can be used for everything. So I think if the council wanted to give us some direction on use of these funds or putting together particular programs, I would be soliciting that input from the council. It had not yet, it had not yet been work that we were doing behind the scenes.
Ms. Hutchings.
If I remember correctly, at a previous meeting, we discussed maybe getting a work group together, have a workshop so that we could look at this and come up with a plan? Is that not correct? That we just haven't really formulated anything yet?
I, I don't recall.
Okay, I thought it was a couple of meetings ago, that something came up that we needed to really sit down and look at what we had because we weren't quite sure how much we were going to have and what the need might be in the community. But I think a work group would certainly be something that we need to look at because as you said, who all is going to be knocking on our door?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this dialogue. This is a very good and I think enlightening to myself. ARPA funds, in my opinion, and the reason why I asked for that to be an item that we looked at, is designed to be a part of our community, to help us recover. I think there's a mental aspect to that as well as a physical and, you know, infrastructure-based component. I think our city is incredibly lucky that we came through the COVID pandemic thus far relatively unscathed. I think our administration has done an incredible job at keeping abreast of, of our financial situation. Our sales tax numbers went up. We have an opportunity here, and what I'm hearing is to use these dollars appropriately. The concern of more entities coming forward is a valid one. However, I want to remind us today, this request is actually for something to forward lead, to mitigate risk. And essentially, there will be money that comes into this project and it's an unknowable amount. It's a question mark amount. We may actually end up donating nothing to this cause. It might be a, just a help to get something off the ground. So this is just essentially saying, hey, theater and musical production for the park, we got your back. And I want to make that distinction very clear because this is not funding a nonprofit. This is not a grant to a business. This is just saying, this is something we value. It was a great event last year and it will not happen again without a municipality or some other entity taking on a we got your back approach. And so I think valid concerns, however, maybe this is a slightly different situation than, than what we're talking about. And a work group would be important, I think, if we were to pursue some other sort of larger scale decision on ARPA funds. This, however, is, is not that. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I appreciate the discussion. I'm certainly a big supporter of the arts and, and many of the programs that have been put on by the local groups. I recognize it's very, very expensive. I, I do want to point out, I'm having some, some consternation with this. To, to me, what it feels like, even though it's a very, very worthy cause, is that the city of Soldatna, even if it's not, you know, tax money that we collected directly, we're talking about ARPA funding, we're, we're essentially being asked to, to be the bank, to take that risk. And, and I feel very uncomfortable with that. I, I want to recognize that the council previously already appropriated for last year's event, $55,000. So now we're talking about potentially, and I understand this may be decreased, a total of 80. And, and I don't want to get into any debate about the, the value of the arts and the, the value of these, these cultural activities, but I think we can all agree that $80,000 is a, is a very expensive ask. And based on the discussion, I also would support a, a broader plan being discussed of the ARPA funds before they're, they're appropriated. So for those reasons, I will be supporting it this evening.
Mr. Ruffridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being patient with me. I, I want to be really clear about some of the language that's being used here today. The city did not appropriate any general fund dollars to support any organization. These were funds that were granted to us through federal dollars that we were responsible with managing, which again, I will say, we managed at an incredibly high level. And potentially the city manager would be willing to share the number of attaboys or accolades that we've received for our management of set funds. This is in no way a irresponsible approach to management of granted funds. It's essentially us saying, we see value in providing. And once again, I want to state that this is not just a physical thing. This is, this is how people come together again. We're seeing it already. We're, this week, we're about ready to have the home show again. People are finally coming together again. That's what we saw last year. That's why the event was a hit. St. Patrick's Day Parade last week. I've never seen so many people out for a St. Patrick's Day event. We want to gather. And I think as a government governing our citizens, allowing an event like that to occur where we say, hey, we got your back, we want people to get together. We're already doing that with so many events. We support the Chamber of Commerce. We support Music in the Park. As Councilmember Shilson said, we have provided these funds in the past. The precedent is set. And this is no, this is not coming out of our bank account. This is, this is a small ask and it's one that does not affect the taxpayers of the city of Soldatna. If it did, you would not hear an ask from me for that. The fact of the matter is, is we have to recover and that's exactly what these funds were intended to do. And I'm, I'm concerned that we're missing the point with some of the language that we're using, considering that we're using general fund dollars and we are not.
This will be the last comment. As I said before, when the CARES Act funds were available, it was an opportunity for all groups to ask and request and submit an application which was reviewed. They may have gotten it, they may not have gotten it. I think it's, everyone should have, every group, every organization, every project should have. should have an equal opportunity to have a process that they can go through to get funds if the, if the council decides to appropriate funds out of the ARPA funds for those special projects, community benefit stuff. I totally agree, this is a great out, a great show, something that's, you know, benefit everyone. But we also have, like I said last week, another group that you just mentioned, the sport, the home show. They've been there for 30 years, and haven't been able to do that for two years because of COVID. And they asked for a little help, and, and no action was taken. So that's the last comment. We'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings?
No.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
You have four yes votes and two no votes.
Resolution 2022-010 passes on a 4-2 vote. We'll move on to the next item, which will be Resolution 2022-011, ratifying the sewer main extension inspection agreement between the city of Soldatna and Jason Tanner, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt? Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-011, ratifying the sewer main extension and inspection agreement between the city of Soldatna and Jason Tanner.
Is that a second from Mr. Carey?
It was, but also from--
Okay, Vice Mayor Parker. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'd like to ask Public Works Director Cornelis to give a brief report. Thank you.
Thank you. This resolution affirms a sewer main extension agreement between the city and a property owner. It's a fairly routine agreement, no costs to the city. Typically, this would be on the consent agenda, but it was heard by council last fall and failed, back when there was a big push to beat the weather and get construction underway before freeze-up last fall. Consultant and contractor were unable to complete that, get that construction started. They do plan to do it when things thaw out this spring. Based on the legislative timeline, we're just simply bringing this back for council's consideration. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber who'd like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, I'm looking at Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak on this item, it's back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Resolution 2022-011 passes on a 6-0 vote. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Mayor and Council reports. My report is, I was invited to attend the local food system workshop, which will be held on this coming Saturday. And I'm not quite sure where it's being held out here. But I'm going to be out of town, and I was wondering if any one of you would be able to attend, to represent. And the city clerk will be passing out the information on it. And, sorry, Mr. Nelson, I don't have a copy for you. But--
No problem.
That will, take a look at it and get back to either myself or the city clerk, see if anybody can attend. Next item I have on here is, it's evaluation time for the city manager. I think there was an email that went out earlier today, and we're going to be setting that up with Vice Mayor Parker to get that evaluation moving along, and probably have it on the May 11th, I believe was the plan, to have it on the May 11th agenda. Another item. Last meeting, we approved the lease for the parking lot there by Aspen Hotel, which I think is a great idea. But it got to me, got me thinking about the Davis Block property. We've been sitting on that property now for, going on close to 10 years. We've got to make some decisions on what we're going to do with it. Are we going to improve it and make it a part of the Soldatna Creek Park? Are we going to continue using it as a parking lot? If we're going to continue using it as a parking lot, we should be looking at doing some landscaping down there, making it better access, not only for vehicles, but for pedestrians that are going back up to the park for certain events. So I'd like to see the administration take a look at that and see what we can do to either do something with the property or improve the property for whatever. I think it's about time. It's been, like I said, close to 10 years. And the last thing I have is, I will be out of town for the April 27 meeting, which I can attend by Zoom, but if Vice Mayor Parker's in here, she might be able to. Okay, thank you very much. And what was that strange noise I heard? Oh, back where I come from, that's a hundred dollar fine. But moving right along, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. A few things to note tonight. We had the RFP for Grant Writing Services, and that deadline closed at the end of the day on Friday. We had seven firms respond, and we had an initial meeting to evaluate those, and I think they represent a great diversity of firms in terms of size, Alaskan versus also some national firms. And I was quite encouraged by that first review. Originally, we had anticipated maybe even bringing a recommendation here tonight as a laydown to move forward, but because we had, I think, several respondents that I, at first review, are going to be highly qualified to do this work, we're working to do some additional engagement with them and potentially set up follow-up interviews. So we're still going through that process, and we will plan to bring a resolution at your next meeting, which is on April 13, with our recommendation. And I will say that we are, have engaged with the attorneys to explore the option of potentially even awarding more than one contract, because it may be that these firms, we would see additional value in either dividing certain types of projects to the different firms, or utilizing them in an overlapping way for some of the services we're going to require. So we're reviewing with the attorneys whether our existing solicitation would allow that, but we'll be moving forward, and I'm quite pleased with what we got in terms of the response to that RFP. Next week, I will be blocking out my days Tuesday and Wednesday for our initial round of negotiations with PSEA for our members in the police department that are covered under the collective bargaining agreement. So we've got our first round, we're starting negotiations, and we're really excited to get going down that process. And then on April 11, we, several staff will be attending the federal grant symposium in Anchorage. So I think AML has sent out some information about the two days, the events on the 11th and the events on the 12th. From my understanding, the event on the 11th is going to be more relevant. I know AML was encouraging those of us that are going to have a direct role in either applying for or managing those grant funds. That kind of symposium with the 40 federal agencies that happens on the 11th is where I see our staff having the greatest value in attending. So currently, I'm planning to attend along with Ms. Reiner, Mr. Cornelis, and Mr. Allen, our utility manager. So the four of us will plan to be in Anchorage that day, and some of us may also plan to stay for the event the following day on the 12th, depending on how we decide what's going to be most strategic in terms of attending that event. And the last thing to update you on, one of my favorite grant awards is the ATAP project. If you recall, this is my congrat, our congratulatory email from May of 2019, telling us that we received the funding for the paving of the trails at Soldatna Creek Park and the installation of the sidewalk. And yesterday, they had the project kickoff meeting, which Kyle attended, and I'd like to ask him to give a brief update. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Queen. We did have our kickoff meeting via video conference. DOT is partnering with the Department of Natural Resources to participate in the design phase for the project. We are planning on having a site meet next month. I'm assembling some of our record drawings and as-bills of the existing pathways, and typical pre-development type process right now. The big takeaways are that survey will occur as soon as the snow melts, and we can get accurate information from a field survey. But unfortunately, the construction timeline is not that surprising, with anticipated construction start date of August 2023. So still some time yet to utilize the park in its current fashion, but the good news is that this is progress. So we're working with, working with our partners up the governmental chain to accomplish this fund project.
Is this that trail project that's been hanging out there for like, two years already?
Yeah, much longer than two years. The, the project is a transportation alternatives program, federal-funded project. The AS for Alaska funds through, through the state of Alaska. It was a competitive grant. We were awarded it, we applied for it probably four years ago. We were awarded it three years ago. It's definitely been a lengthy process. The scope is paving of all of the existing gravel trails in Soldatna Creek Park, creation of a new trail, pedestrian trail connecting the park and 47th Street, and then the installation of sidewalks on Homestead Avenue to the pedestrian trail that crosses Soldatna Creek to Wingonberry Lane. So it's a pedestrian access project, scored quite highly. It will create ADA compliant trails for our users at the park. It is a great project. We're eager to see it move to the next step, slowly.
This will be your retirement project, that's right.
I, I plan to see it before I retire.
Are there any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I was just going to offer to answer questions, but I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number 11, Public Comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? And for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Next item on the agenda is item 12, Council Comments, and we'll start out with Mr. Nelson.
And no comments this evening, thank you.
Ms. Knowles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prom is coming up, and that will take place on April 2nd. And also, there will be a talent show hosted by the National Honor Society on April 8 at the Sohei Auditorium.
Thank you. We'll move on to Ms. Hutchings.
No comment.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just on our consent agenda tonight, wanted to just highlight and talk about briefly, just for maybe a celebration's sake for a second, repealing Resolution 2021-036, recommending that masks be worn in public indoor facilities of city-owned buildings. Just wanted to say a hip hip hooray for that, since we didn't get to talk about it. And also, I already mentioned it in previous comments, but home show is this weekend, and it's exciting to have some of those events back again. And yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Chilton?
No comments, just happy to see this on again.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm always very impressed with our administration and the way they look at things, and the discussion of all those applicants, dealing with grant writing. What certainly came to my mind was, oh, can we pick up a couple of them rather than just one? And so I just want to say I'm really pleased that you're considering. All of us here serve on different things, but grant writing is one of the most sought-after skills throughout the community on just so many different levels. Wherever we could get, I'll say, two teams working on different aspects, it just seems to me that's a, it's, it's better to have more than fewer. And I, again, I'm just real pleased that you're considering as you go through the process. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I want to say I was reluctant to support the resolution to provide funds for triumphant theater for the play this summer. Some of Councilmember Chilton's comments about, you know, we started with music in the park, and it's kind of grown and taken on and taken on life of its own. I hope that as we move forward, and we're not using the, the free federal funds, and they're not really free, because we are taxpayers and help provide, give those money, get those monies back to us, that they're not coming back, and we're not setting ourselves up to be a cash cow for all the groups out there that are like, well, let's go to the city of Soldatna. They get money, and they're giving money away right and left. So with that, I, as others have mentioned, I would like to, after administration has gone to the Infrastructure Funding Conference in April, see us put together a work group to discuss the ARPA funds that the city will be receiving, and we have a two-year period to allocate those funds, correct?
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. I will verify the deadline. It's, it's quite a bit longer than we have with CARES Act, so that, it's at least two years.
Yeah. So anyway, after, there's more information after the workshop in April, putting together a council work group to discuss how we're going to be potentially using these funds, and that it's not picking this group here, that group there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 13, Executive Session. City recruitment process. Subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and char, character of any person in accordance with Alaska Statute 44.62.310(c)(2). The discussion of the city clerk recruitment is a subject that may tend to prejudice the reputation and character of an applicant for city employment, therefore may be discussed in executive session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to enter into an executive session to discuss a personnel matter in accordance This is a matter that could prejudice the reputation or character of an applicant for city employment, therefore may be held in executive session. The application, the applicant to be discussed has elected to have this discussion take place in executive session. The executive session will include Mayor Whitney, Councilmember's Human Resources Manager O'Reagan, and City Attorney Brooks Chandler.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session. Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. And other, excuse me, is there any objection to coming out of executive session? Seeing, seeing none, we are back in regular session. Councilmember Carey, you had something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request your assistance on something that the clerk would handle. I would not wish to receive any confidential material by email.
Okay.
Okay? And so from what I heard in terms of, with legal, that instead, we can ask that hard copies be made available at City Hall-- copies be made available at City Hall for me, for anything of a confidential nature.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And having said that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, is meeting announcements. April 6, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, 5:30 p.m. And April 13, 2022, City Council meeting at 6 p.m. And having no further business before us, we are adjourned.